All this work session to order, please men, would you read the role?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welfer.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Take it. All in favor, please say aye. I oppose, same sign, motion carries. Michelle's going to be on her way, I'm quite sure, and we have several other options to discuss in the budget worksheet that she's been handing out, but in the meantime, Susie can explain maybe what, how we arrived, you know, part of my proposal is the wage compression comparison issue, that we tackled that this year, and I'd like Susie to explain and describe how we got the numbers and how we got where we are, so Susie, why don't you do that, please?
I'm going to hand out these. It's impossible to do that without people here. I will email these to all the departments, so you guys have them. What we did, this is not looking at people, this is looking at physicians, so what we did was we surveyed the top 10 cities in Iowa, population-wise, and we looked for, when you do an equalization project like this, you want to be within 5 to 10 percent of the median, that needs to be your goal, so we found out what the median was for all of the physicians, and then we took the current salaries, and anybody that was further than that 5 to 10 percent away from the median income, we are suggesting an equalization increase. We also have some compression issues that really have nothing to do with the equalization pay, but there are compression issues where physicians underneath them are at or above their salary, and so we've made suggestions on that as well. The goal of the HR department is act or if this step is approved, then next year we would like to bring to you the ability to implement some form of a pay-for-performance. There will still need, especially being a public sector, it's my professional opinion that there still needs to be a cost of living adjustment that is made independent from pay-for-performance based on whatever the cost of living is at that time, but also implementing some performance measures and setting goals for all non-bargaining employees. We have performance evaluations for bargaining employees, however, they're not tied to salaries, but it would be my suggestion that you, that we kind of make a combination of all of that in the future, but in order to implement such a project, we really need to get our salaries at a point where they're close to the median. This by no means gets them all exactly to the median, but it gets them within that range, which is where they need to be in order to possibly implement some steps, so that when you're looking at performance, you have some steps to move within, also when you're hiring new employees versus employees that have tenure, utilizing those steps as well, so this proposal would get us there with all non-bargaining, and I've listed the reason, whether it's a compression issue or a comparison issue. This is the proposal.
What's the dollar amount that we're looking at, Susie?
It's higher than we originally talked about, only because we added the library onto this, just so that you guys had an all-inclusive look, the library increases are voted on by the library board and not council, but we didn't want, originally, we hadn't included them in here because it's not brought to council, but I think it's important, since it's all general fund, to look at the entire thing, so the total equalization is $109,154, that is prior to any benefits, that is specifically salaries.
Susie, what did we say we would, it would be before, was it $88,000 at the beginning?
It was $88,000, yeah.
And this comparison was to other cities and not to other public or private entities?
It was, it was just to other cities, which is what is recommended that you look at when you're doing an equalization thing, is for the public sector, they tend to look at like, and if you went to bargaining, we're only allowed to, so that's what was recommended.
Municipality, municipality.
Right.
Okay.
So apples to apples.
Sure. Some of these are pretty shiny apples.
At this point, does anybody have any questions? I'm sure you're going to have to kind of take a look at that, but I know Susie's done a lot of work on this, did the survey with a lot of the other cities, and I think we have good numbers.
Just a real quick question, Susie, the cost of living at 3%, other than one year where we, I think we took a percentage back from non-bargaining, their contracts have been pretty consistent with what we've negotiated, right?
Correct. I mean, as long as I've been here, there was only one year, and that has since been made up.
Not specifically, has it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real clear, yeah.
The only thing that wouldn't make how matters is the compounding.
That's true.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, all the questions I have for right now.
Anybody have any comments or questions regarding that issue? I don't know, Michelle, are you ready? I'm rushing, I don't, you had last minute visitors.
I'm ready as I'm going to be today, let's put it that way, and these worksheets come with a disclaimer, so, and, and I did not have time to make copies for other than the council, so that's all we've got today.
Has this changed since the one that you gave me?
I don't believe so, not materially, anyway.
I would give this to Tim, because I have the one that you gave me.
Okay, so probably the biggest change that we're going to talk about today is change in healthcare costs, spent a lot of time working on our adjustments for that the last week. I, I think we, in fact, I started out, there's two options on here, the first page, I guess I should walk you through where we are, first page of these options are the same options that you've seen at prior meetings, the only ones I'd been requested to provide. If you go to page two, that starts a number of new options that I have been asked to provide in the, within the last, oh, three days, let's say, and so that's what we have. Option seven, and this one was asked for earlier last week, so I'm, they were asking for the base plus the additional request plus other line item adjustments, but then reduce it to the fiscal 15 levy rate. So I did that, that would take reductions of $570,501, and those are not identified, so that would require some more work to figure that one out. Option eight, and I've identified options eight and nine as the mayor's options, so option eight includes the additional requests, plus filling three police officer positions, three firefighters, the wage compression adjustments, the other line item adjustments, and then I incorporated a health cost reduction of 5%, and to do all that and leave the levy rate the same, we would have to use general fund balance of $763,467. And leaving the levy rate the same, if you remember, that increases the residential property tax by 2.45%, and is a reduction to commercial industrial of 5.26%, plus they'll also have the $1,000 business credit in addition to that. Option nine, which is another way of arriving at the mayor's option, as I looked at health insurance costs again, and, you know, the reason I can do more now is we have 10 full months, or eight full months, sorry, can't even add in my head right now, I went through, all the way through February to see what was happening with our claims, and I, I think we can do 10%, and that will not be a problem, that may use a little bit that we added to the amounts restricted for health insurance last year, I don't think it will even use all of it, but it may use some. So the 10% reduction, again, that would fund the additional request level, the three police, three firefighters, the wage compression adjustments, the other line item adjustments, the health costs go down 10%, and we would use general fund balance of $323,887. Again, that leaves the levy rate the same, residential increase at 2.45%, corporate industrial reduction of 5 and 5.26%. After that, I've had several requests from various council people. Option 10 includes the additional requests again, but only includes two police officer positions, two firefighters, it does include the wage adjustments and the other line item adjustments, so I, I just did these assuming a 10% reduction in health cost, that would, and this also was leaving the levy rate the same, so to do that and just add back the four positions would only require the use of $160,000 in fund balance, keeps the levy rate the same, again, residential at 2.45% increase, commercial industrial at 5.26% decrease. Another request I had was, what if we filled additional requests, wage adjustments, other line item adjustments, two police, two firefighters, and we used half a million of general fund balance? That also, and I did all these with the 10% reduction in health costs, that would bring the levy to $17, just under 1770, well, $1779 and change. That would bring the increase for residential property down to 1.58%, commercial industrial reduction of 6.07. Then the same option, only using a million dollars of general fund balance, that would bring the levy down to 17.57, that's almost no increase to residential property, 0.29% increase for residential, which would be $3 a year on $100,000 of assessed value, and 7.26% reduction for commercial. So that's all the options on page two, but we have a couple more on page three. So on page three, I was also asked what would happen if we used the base option for expenses, so if you remember back to the beginning of all this, the base option included the changes in the, basically personnel changes due to contractual things, there's a few other miscellaneous changes in there, but it's primarily due to contractual changes. Then they also wanted to pick up the revenue adjustments that were in option two, which I think is the additional request level, so that's all I did in option 13. Base level expenses, picked up additions to revenue in option two, and I, I just can't stress this enough, this option includes nearly a million dollars in revenue from the school district, but because of the way I was asked to calculate it, it doesn't include the expense to provide that fuel to the school district, so I don't think this is a viable option, but I was asked to present it, so I am. That levy rate, if that were viable, would be $17.41, and that would be a reduction of 0.62% for residential property and 8.1% for commercial. I was also asked for an option 14, which, now we're going back to the additional request level, plus the wage adjustments, plus the other line item adjustments, the health cost reduction that I put in at 10%, and some additional adjustments to animal control. This includes no new positions for public safety, so current staffing only. That would result in a levy rate of $17.88, increase to residential property would be 2.07%, and reduction for commercial properties about 5.62%, so that includes the use of no fund balance and adds no staffing. That's kind of an overview of all the questions for different options that I've gotten basically over the weekend, so any details that you would like on any of those, I would be happy to try to discuss.
Mr. Schmidt?
Michelle, on item 13, that does not factor in any changes for animal control other than what's in the proposed budget, is that correct, in item 13?
It only includes what was in the base budget, so nothing other than what was in the base budget, which would be the little bit of personnel increases.
Okay, so that does not include the six additional employees or something?
No, because the, well, okay, it did include the part-time people, that's true, it does, animal control does. I apologize, that's true.
So that's, so that's the difference, or that's one of the differences between 13 and 14, you're talking about adjustments to animal control, and 14, you're taking those out, is that correct?
Not necessarily, I was asked to, we made educated guess of what it would take if the city provided the animal control officers, but did not provide the shelter piece of it, so I, it leaves in animal control, all the animal control officer positions, it removes kennel cleaners, the medical technician, the clerk, most of the veterinary fees, most of the food, those kind of supplies, and I did take out all the utilities for the building. Whether that's what we can actually do or not, I, I don't know yet, I, I think, I don't know what would happen, example, for an animal picked up in the middle of the night, this does not allow for us to have a place to hold that animal overnight.
Did you get a chance to take a look at the proposal that Cedar Ben sent us on this afternoon, that, I just, I just got it, but I did not get a chance to take a look at it, so.
I didn't even know they sent this one, so no, I have not seen that.
Yeah, it was after 4 o'clock.
Was it? Okay.
If you have a job, you probably didn't see it.
Okay. So going back to 13 again, can you explain to me, I didn't follow you on the, the fuel increase for the school district, I'm not sure.
One of the things that was in the additional level, in the additional department press level, because they were not allowed to, to adjust their expenses in the base level. Well, we believe that we're going to be supplying the school district with, I think it's diesel fuel for the buses, is that correct, diesel?
Yeah.
Okay, for a minute I was confused, was the cost to provide that, so we, so what was incorporated in the additional level was the expense to provide that and also the revenue from providing that, but I was asked to give you the expenses from option one, which did not have the cost of the fuel, and the revenue from option two, so I had to make a choice, do I give you all the revenue in option two and give you an option that's unrealistic, or do I not give you the revenue in option two and have people accusing me of not giving you what you asked? So what I chose to do was give you what you asked and try to explain to you that I don't know that it's viable.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Questions, just comments? This will be the last, the last chance to just have discussion, council until Thursday regarding this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On Thursday, will there be an agenda meeting in the morning?
Yes.
Correct? And then the agenda meeting will have included which one of these options is on the agenda, is that correct?
For the, for the budget hearing you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Well, no, 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 the agenda meeting for Thursday morning, Pat, will be just, will be for the, for the ninth council meeting.
Okay.
We should be getting the agenda out tomorrow, Thursday. Tomorrow or Wednesday.
Tomorrow, tomorrow or Wednesday you'll have the, at least by Wednesday, you'll have the agenda for the budget hearing.
For the budget hearing.
For the budget.
And that will have down which.
That will, and, and I will tell you that my original budget proposal was going to be for either option eight or nine, one of those two, that was, that's what I've been working towards this whole time. Councilman Hart has offered up 10, 11, and 12 as options, and while I would still prefer to see all six, six public safety positions backfilled, I would certainly can live with four, and that does make the levy rate look better, and if we went to option 12, that makes the residential increase much, much smaller, so I may do some haranguing here and see where we land. I would suspect that what we'll have on the agenda for the budget hearing is either 8, 9, 10, 11, or 12, or some very, very close semblance of one of those, Pat.
And, Michelle, so using the fund balance, what does that do for our rating that we talk about, does that anything, any effect on that at all?
It certainly does not help it.
So what is our current fund balance, total?
Our, well, I don't know that I have all that with me, but I can tell you that our current general fund, undesignated fund balance is about 10.1 million as of June of 2014. Because of what's hap, the, if, if the good news in health insurance costs continue, I, I think we'll see good news for that for 15, too, but, yeah, I can't tell you, I can't tell you where we're going to land for sure for 15, and I don't know what Moody's concerns would be to budget to use the million, but there, there, there would be a time coming in the future where that could be an issue. And another issue that we will have looking into the future, we have not had a problem with the 8-10 ceiling for several years now, but likely that, that will start becoming an issue again, maybe as soon as 17, it's, it's hard for me to tell right now, but if we assume no new revenue sources, the room that we currently have in the 8-10 cap will be eaten up, because if you remember, we have two significant additional revenue sources for fiscal 16 in this budget that won't be significant additional sources going forward.
Michelle, a comment, though, I guess, we have used some form of fund balance to reach our final number, I think, four out of the five years, last five years, and our bond rating has stayed the same for all of those, so are things going to change that might jeopardize that?
Well, we haven't really used a lot of general fund, fund balance, we, there was one year we thought we would.
Right.
And we probably used more health insurance fund balance, that, I think that makes a pretty big difference to Moody's, and we've, the part that I can't predict, I do not have a crystal ball with that, is how much better our departments might perform than what they're telling us they're going to do today.
And that would be my other point.
There's a lot of unknown.
Is that we.
This is a plan.
I, I think, and you would know better than I do, your memory's better than I am for sure, but I remember the, the year that Harold made the motion to use fund balance to cover it, we did, and I thought there was another year at least that we used general fund balance, and historically, I think it was only one year that we've ever had to use actually any of the fund balance.
We haven't used it as much as we.
We have performed well enough through the year and saved enough money that that fund has still continued to grow.
For a lot of different reasons, that probably has happened, I, maybe I should put together a chart of that, because I don't, honestly do not have that all in my head today.
Mr. Morrissey, from my standpoint, and certainly Michelle is a CFO, if I thought that there was any jeopardy that using any amount of fund balance was going to jeopardize our bond rating or our future, I wouldn't suggest that we use it, I don't think that it will.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I, I've got a, a number of concerns with using fund balance or adding positions, mainly it's, it comes from what's going to happen in future periods, and while we can't, you know, look in our crystal ball and know for sure, there are certain things that we can probably expect, so the, the $1.8 million that were being provided from the state, you know, in future periods, that will either remain flat or decrease or may disappear altogether, which is, you know, typical for the state, they've never continued to fund the cities for either pensions or other items like that, so that, that may very well go away, which would cause us quite a, a problem. Also, in future periods, we have the reclassification of multiple or multi-residential property, which will certainly bring down revenue for sure, as all those properties begin to be taxed at the residential rate over a 10-year period, or sooner, as that gap closes. If we look at our revenue from residential property valuations today for 2016, we're looking at a shrink of $359,000 already, which is, you know, a trend that, you know, obviously we don't want to see, but that's the reality for 2016. Also, if you look at our local economy, you know, deer shed 565, good paying jobs in January, you know, JCPenney's closing down, even if we could replace those retail jobs, they're not bill good paying jobs anyway, but it's still a problem. And overall, poverty in our community has increased, if you look at, you know, the last five or so years, poverty, by looking at free and reduced lunch has increased 15%. You know, in, in our schools, the lowest rate is 45% free and reduced lunch, and the highest is 92, so it's not like we don't have a poverty problem here in the city. And, you know, as we look at other funding sources, like yesterday, we've got the franchise fee for Mid-America at 3%, and certainly we could go into that and, and raise that some more as a, as a revenue source, up to five, but Mid-America is also looking at increasing their rates as well, so that's going to be more expense to the taxpayers as well, so that's another possibility, but another thing that's probably bad for our community, we just had the fuel tax increase of 10 cents a gallon, which is another burden on our taxpayers, you know, those trying to get to work, you know, and other, you know, it's more money every year, and then just overall, you know, trying to, with the levy rate, it's still fairly high, and it's approaching double that of Cedar Falls, I mean, it is definitely getting, approaching that, and it makes it even tougher for us to attract new business and really grow our city, we're not growing, we're not growing business, we're not growing population, and those are troubling trends as well, when we use balance or, or anything else, or adding positions that I would love to add, but I don't think we can really afford when we look at future periods. What else? Yeah, I guess that's.
All right, David, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask just real quickly?
Yeah, sure.
So you mentioned that there'd be at least these five options on the agenda, how, for those of us that would necessarily have some other ideas, how would we get those on the agenda, do we get those to you, to Michelle, or who do we get those to?
Well, I mean, we've been having these meetings for weeks now, and I have not heard one single suggestion from anybody as to how to do what you just suggested we do, Dave, that's why we've been having these meetings, is what would you like to do, what do you want to reduce, what do you want to cut, what services don't you, want you to have, or how do you want to do it? There will only be one option on the agenda for Thursday.
Right.
And if that should fail, then we're going to have lots of conversations about what would be next.
Okay.
And what options and how you would get there. I would suggest to you that, again, in order to find out what options have what effect, you know, that's what Michelle wanted by last Friday, so that she could plug those in, so the only thing that I would disagree with your comments, David, are the one that I would most vehemently, is that our business community is not growing, we absolutely are, and I think if you spend some time talking to Noel, I think he could emphatically show that we are growing our business community, and, rapidly, actually, but anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I could go back to my question, I thought you said that you were going to have options eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 available.
No, I didn't say that, I said those are the ones I'm going to consider, one of those will be my, my proposal.
Oh, okay, all right, so we can have other options that we don't necessarily need to get to you or Michelle prior to Thursday, is that correct?
If the option that's on the agenda passes, it's going to be open.
I understand.
If it doesn't, then you may, you may offer any suggestion you want.
Okay, and you, and you don't want to necessarily see those or have them?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, Steve, yes, I do.
Let's try and have a conversation here, do you want us to get those to you prior to then or not, yes or no?
Yes, they were supposed to have been in last night.
I understand, I understand, we're still getting information, I got emails today with information, sorry.
No, I mean, that's why we've been having the meetings, is to, is to try to get options and suggestions on the tape, and boy, I haven't been able to get many, but.
Well, you did, we've provided options.
Did you?
14.
Oh, yeah, 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 there are, there are, you're right, none of them are reductions, though, are they, other than the ones that, that I put down?
Well, they're reductions and increases.
13 is one, yeah, there are, I'm sorry, and I will stand corrected, there are.
And then, Mr. Mayor, my other quick question, as far as the agenda for Thursday goes, I assume I have Michelle's presentation.
Yep.
Okay, I would also like to request probably about 10 or 15 minutes for a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to present also.
Well, I, I've never had that happen before, Mr. Schmidt, but I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Right, okay, well, I just wanted to ask, I had a time to get that put on there, so, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, are we going to know?
Mr. Schmidt, are we going to know what that PowerPoint's about?
Uh, it's going to be about the budget, and just some review of some things and some, you know, view long-term, as David mentioned, and previous years, future years, that type of thing.
Is it going to deal with a specific option?
A variety of options, sure.
See, and the thing that I worry about is like what happened last year, where we have a present, we have a option presented that's not even part of what we were given before we go into that meeting, so we don't have the benefit of having all the details about what goes into that option, so if there is some kind of option that's going to be presented, if the mayor's budget would by some chance get defeated, then I would, I know that I, for one, will probably make a motion to table anything if I don't see that, that, that detail right in front of me.
Okay, that'd be fine.
I, I would, I would just caution counsel and Mr. Morrissey, while we did schedule this meeting, I, I think, in case there was a delay in getting that, we are under a bit of a time, that's right. We, we need to get a budget passed. We do have a couple of days if, if that should happen, but I would, I would certainly hope that we can pass something on Thursday.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Schmidt said if there is some other option, other than what we have presented in front of us-
Yeah.
-we'll have those details in front of us.
You do. Yep.
Anything else, counsel now?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, adjourned.
We call the Boards and Commissions Committee meeting together. Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion and second for the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, we have an agenda, somebody'd like to take those items to business?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Christopher Schumpf to the Board of Adjustment and James Linford to our Memorial Hall Commission, with Christopher with an expiration date of March 2nd, 2020, and with James, March 31st, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and second on those two items, I believe both those are new appointments, too, aren't they?
I believe they are.
They don't say reappointment.
They are new appointments.
Okay, great, all right. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, those items are approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thank you.
The Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed in the minutes of February 23rd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, if we have new business.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those travel requests. First, we have Officers Erie, Gergen, and Sergeant Richter to go to the ILEETA Training Conference in Wheeling, Illinois, April 19th through the 24th, at a cost not to exceed $2,845. Next, we have Lieutenant Payne, Sergeant Gerke, Investigator Gersh, has to go to the INOA 2015 Annual Conference in West Des Moines, March 24th through the 26th, at a cost not to exceed $876. Then we have Elizabeth Andrews and Tom Klinsky for the Transportation of Exhibit to the Waterloo Center for the Arts, Tulsa, Oklahoma, March 12th through the 14th, at a cost not to exceed $960. And finally, we have Sergeant Rasmus, an investor chopper, for the Homicide Investigative Challenge in East Moline, Illinois, March 23rd through the 25th, excuse me, 26th, at a cost not to exceed $1,381. I move we approve those five items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
I do have, Dan, could you tell me on those three items of yours, how many of those are for certification, that type of thing?
Dan Trolka, Director of Safety Services, none, simply for being more proficient in their job.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
I would vote no on items one, two, and four, and yes on item three.
That item passes.
Pre-haths?
Uh, pre-haths, let's see, we've got Clerk's Office, the amount of $8,398 for annual service, attendance enterprise software for time clock, Fire Department, $4,416.20 plus $300 shipping and handling for wall mount, turnout gear, lockers, Fire Department, $4,275 for an all-weld 1648 SSMB boat and trailer, Leisure Services, $1,971.50 plus $9.95 shipping and handling for Chief Architect Professional Design Software, and Leisure Services, $24,850 for architectural services for Sherwood Recreation Area, Phase Two Project Sewer, $2,778.58 plus $300 shipping and handling for impeller and belts repair parts for Thicner Polyblend Unit Number One, Sewer, the amount of $2,641.32 plus $300 shipping and handling for replacement drive unit for Number Two, Thicner TAS Transfer Pump.
Second. We have a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, those items pass. We have items six through 12, Budget Line Item Amendments, I move that we approve them, copies are on file in Ms. Scherr's office, and also that we pay the bills this week, which are $625,334, 625,334.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, those items pass.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Lynn.
The roll has me down, it's here, you might change that.
From last week?
Yeah.
I'll get that corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Anything further? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Vote same sign, motion carries. First item of business tonight is to recognize the March Team Member of the Month, and I don't see Bob here, but Bob Osgood is our March Team Member of the Month. I had a, the honor and opportunity to recognize him last week. Bob is in our plumbing department, and I'm not sure how long he's been here, but it's a long time, and Bob has been incredibly instrumental in our footing drain removal program, and is the inspector that if you've had somebody out to your house, it was most likely Bob, or he was most likely around pretty close, and he's just done an incredible job getting this program up and trying to get it running smoothly, and so, Bob, I hope you're watching, and I hope you, you're just so deserving of this recognition, so congratulations to Bob. Alex, I need Alex to come up, and we're going to have a whole bunch of folks come up and recognize our Leisure Services Character Count, Character Count Coach and Player Awards this year. Alex Hillman from Leisure Services is going to come up and do us that honor. Of course, can you hear me now? Can you? Okay. Alex, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the program over to you, I'll, I'll hand these out as you recognize folks, okay? So just everybody come on up, and we'll kind of, kind of get up here so that you can be on television. There you go.
Uh, first off, I want to thank the mayor.
It's on, yeah, just talk right into it, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving us the opportunity to recognize these guys, and also the council members. Um, we just finished up our youth basketball program for the year, we had about 450 kids participate, started all the way down with pre-K, so three and a half, all the way up to sixth grade, so we've had a pretty busy winter. Over 30 volunteer coaches in all different age groups volunteered their time, a lot of them are parents of children that play, so I obviously want to thank just not the ones that are here tonight, but all of them for donating their time to us, because without our volunteers, these programs would not be successful. We will start with our Player of the Year in the fourth through sixth grade, Brianna McPolan, she was our fourth through sixth grade Player of the Year in our girls division.
Congratulations, okay, good job. Turn right around here, I think there's some folks taking pictures back there. Okay, good job.
Our male player is not here tonight, but he was, Ronald Frazier was our fourth through sixth grade Player of the Year. From there, we'll go to our Coaches of the Year, in our second, third grade girls division, we have Clint Fuller.
Clint, congratulations.
Thanks, it's very-
Good job.
Thank you.
You guys are just incredible. Stay up here now, for crying out loud, this, this, don't run off, just, yeah.
He's trying to run.
Yeah, okay.
Second, third grade boys coach was Mike Lynn.
Mike, congratulations, there you go.
And then, these two for the fourth through sixth grade boys, Chris Adams and Tony Graves.
Chris?
Yeah.
Which one's Chris? Congratulations. Tony, looks like you, the kid's got the best of you somewhere.
Yep.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, guys, you know, it just, this is such a great program, and, and none of it could happen without the volunteers and the coaches, and, and the time and the effort that you guys put in, and Brianna, congratulations to you, so, a, a great big round of applause and appreciation for all of you. Ladies and gentlemen, I always kind of end our presentations with a little caveat that you guys are all welcome to stay if you'd like to, and you're not going to offend anybody if you don't, so, uh, see ya. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
It's a move that we received, placed on file and approved the Consent Agenda, items 1A through B5, also with the approval of the Consent Agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $625,334, 625,334.00.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, wait a minute, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, what am I doing? Never mind, any comment? Mr. Morrissey, I'm, I'm reading and not paying attention, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, uh, the Consent Agenda, eight, seven, um, Suzie, could you go over that a little bit? I know there was some-
For the parking management services?
Yes, yes.
We had a few different companies contact us, and multiple companies asked for more time, it's a very large project, and they need to, a lot of times, they're dealing with subcontractors as well for parking management services, so that is just simply moving the hearing back a couple of weeks to give all interested time to get to Waterloo, look at all of our facilities, and give them time to make an accurate bid on parking management services. So we've already set the date of hearing, this is just extending the timeout.
Okay, so at, on March 16th, what will happen at the, what is, what is going to happen at that public hearing on March 16th?
There will be a public hearing, anybody that wants to talk about, or to council or council, that wants to talk about outsourcing parking management can, and at that time, we'll read the bids, so nothing will be decided at that meeting, it'll just be simply taking a look at the bids.
Do you know when there will be council decision on that?
Sometime after that, after staff has had a chance to review all of that and make a recommendation to council, so it-
Because some of us may not be here that day, so.
Yeah.
It won't be that day.
It will, it definitely will not be that day. It'll be at least a week, if not two or three.
And, and actually, th- this is a good thing that this is being spread out, that because-
Yeah, so there is no meeting the 23rd, so it'll definitely be at least the 30th of November.
Okay. We, we really kind of had anticipated there was just gonna be one responding to this, and we got more interest than we expected, which is a good thing. So, it's, it's a good thing that it's being pushed out.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you bet. Further comments on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Very good, the motion carries. I need to recognize a couple of people here. Uh, I don't think James Lenfer. Is James here? Okay, uh, how about Chris Schim?
He is.
Oh, there you go, Chris. Hi, Chris. Okay. Uh, James Lenfer was just appointed to our Memorial Hall of Commission Board, and Chris Schim, uh, has just been appointed to our Board of Adjustment. So, to both Chris, to you and James, thank you very much. Uh, our boards and commissions are incredibly important, and the folks that step up and volunteer and give of their time and talents and efforts and so forth are much appreciated. So, hopefully, you enjoy the appointment, and I know you'll do a good job, so congratulations. You bet.
Thank you.
And also, we have a new appointee, Christopher Preston, uh, to the position of Airport Maintenance Employee out at the airport. I don't think Chris is here either. Chris is not, but Chris Preston is a new employee, uh, out at the airport. So, welcome to all of you. We're in public. Chris, and the same caveat goes to you. If you'd like to stick around and watch council meeting, go ahead. If you don't, uh, you're not gonna offend anybody today. All right. Public hearings, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schi- uh, Mr. Schi-
Schim and Schmidt, yeah, they're close. Yep, exactly. We have, uh, item number two is a motion to receive, uh, and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And as for the fiscal year 2015 Asphalt Overlay Program Contract Number 874.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file or item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the 2015 Asphalt Overlay Program?
Just one quick statement, uh, before we award a contract. I think we should find out who did Downing Avenue, and until they do that street properly to a reasonable code, I don't think we should award anybody a new contract that hasn't taken care of nothing. You haven't been there, you drive from the east to the west, there are two large potholes. You hit the pothole, it throws water up on the sidewalk clear to the chain link fence on the property. If there's a school kid there, that's not a safe walk to school. You get down by the traffic light, down to Downing, it's the same thing over again.
Okay.
As well as the handicap crosswalks are in asphalt rather than concrete. Thank you.
Eric, are we aware of those, those issues? Okay, I'll get with you and see what the deal is with that. Okay, thank you, Forrest. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to comment regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion then that we close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction. Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Leisure Services for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, there's two bidders tonight. The estimate on this project was $145,000. Madam Clerk, what were our bids?
The first bid was from KW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $129,950.129,950.00. The second bid was from Nagel Signs Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $125,800.125,800.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for an ordinance approving the request by Nian and Lei LLC to vacate a platted 20-foot wide by approximately 110-foot, uh, long storm sewer easement on Lot A of Crossroads Retail Center Edition.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four at this time? A second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive.
Close the hearing.
The recommendation.
Recommendation.
You have to read all of that.
Oh, and, uh-
Recommendation.
File a recommendation of approval of planning, programming, zoning commission.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance approving the request by Nian and Lei LLC to vacate a platted 20-foot wide by approximately 110-foot-long storm sewer easement on Lot A of Crossroads Retail Center Edition.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote last time, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walper? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Next four, 11, 12, 13, 14.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move to approve change order number seven for a net increase of $56,571.71 for the FY 2013 Street Reconstruction Program, contract number 832, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. In 12, I move to adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for the work performed by Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of $70,891,856.56 for the FY 2013 Street Reconstruction Program, contract number 832. 13, I move to adopt a resolution approving the request by Nian and Lee LLC to dedicate 20 feet-wide storm sewer easement over a portion of Lot A in Crossroads Retail Center Edition, otherwise known as 1931 Seer Street. And in 14, I move to adopt a resolution approving vegetation variance agreement between the City of Waterloo, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the City of Evansdale to allow for specific and limited variance from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers vegetation standards and authorize mayor and city attorney to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding those four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
On number 12, does that include Downing Avenue? Was that included in that item?
I'm assuming it does. Mr. Thorson?
Eric Thorson, senior, no, it does not. Downing Avenue was in the 14 project.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments? Further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item 15, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Item 15 is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the EPA's streamlining rule, section 8-3.
Second.
Any comments or questions, counsel? It's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving development agreement with Three Little Lams LLC for said property.
Second. And that is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.